Welcome, everybody, to the twice-monthly meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Westminster. We'll begin the meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much. If you have an electronic device, please silence it out of courtesy for others during the meeting. We have a fairly light agenda, so let's get cracking. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the meeting, June 8th. Have everybody had a chance to review them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. President?
I'll second them, Mr. President.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion, amendments, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no public hearings. We have only the May Departmental Operating Reports on the consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion about the May Departmental Operating Reports?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The may departmental operating reports are approved. Mr. Mayor, reports for the mayor.
The only thing I have is news coming to us yesterday or today about Governor having cancer, so we will just from here extend our wishes for a recovery and prayers to the family during his time of healing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reports from standing committees. Dr. Becker.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Caracci.
One thing, I had an opportunity to attend a chaplaincy class last week and welcome the group to Westminster. The chief had asked me if I would be willing to do that. It was interesting. It was a group of folks that were training to be chaplains, and actually, one of our police captains was in the class, and she did that on her own time. She took a week of vacation to attend the class, and I went over the syllabus and had a chance to talk to instructors. It's really good stuff that they're learning in terms of the counseling aspect. You know, these folks are all volunteering their time, including our chaplains, so we're pretty lucky to have folks like that willing to spend that much time being trained to do that job, and it was an honor to be able to represent the mayor and council and welcome these folks to Westminster. So, other than that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Caracci. Councilwoman Albert.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Councilwoman Albert. Councilman Pecoraro.
Nothing, Mr. President.
All right. We have no, any items for comments or discussion from the council? All right, we have no bids. We have one ordinance and resolution. Introduction of Ordinance 856, an ordinance to authorize and empower the city to issue and sell general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $21 million. The proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purpose of financing the broadband fiber infrastructure project. Ms. Wolf, how do you want to handle this? Ms. Palmer?
Sure. This is an ordinance that authorizes us to borrow up to $21 million for the infrastructure, the broadband infrastructure project. This is a general parameters, and Alyssa, please jump in if I say anything wrong here. This is a parameters ordinance only. It just, in very broad terms, gives us the power to enter into the negotiations for the debt later on. We will pass an ordinance or we'll put forth an ordinance for introduction later, which will have the details of all of that financing. At the stage that we're at right now is we're ready to go out to RFP for financing, and this ordinance allows us to enter into those negotiations and set some of the parameters. Our general idea is that we'll borrow around $20 million. We've built in extra in there for extra closings because we expect that we'll start with a closing, and then we'll close again later on for a fixed rate. We'll be doing a general obligation financing in the beginning for drawdown in construction, and then we'll switch over to a fixed rate loan later on. So, this ordinance gives us the power to do all of those things.
Any questions?
Can I just add a couple of things?
Please.
So, just to be specific, it authorizes you to do three things in particular: to issue bonds in a not-to-exceed amount of $21 million, to issue bond anticipation notes, which are a little bit slightly different form of financing that's generally used for shorter-term borrowing because in a high-interest-rate climate typically, of $21 million. And it authorizes you down the road to refund whatever bonds or bond anticipation notes that you issue if, for example, interest rates drop. It authorizes you to refund those in the amount of 130 percent of the principal amount being refunded, so that it can include costs of refunding, similar things that are related to the issuance of the bonds. It pledges your full faith and credit, which means that tax revenues will need to be used to pay this bond if the revenues from the project are insufficient, and it authorizes you to use other sources to do that.
Any questions from council?
So, Mr. President?
Mr. Caracci.
You know, reading this, it looks to me like, at this point, this is strictly, we're not committing to anything, correct?
Well, we're committing to doing it.
Other than to do the research, at this point. We're not, we're not, we're not committing, well, we don't know an interest rate, we don't know terms, we don't know anything at this point.
Right.
So, we're not committing to any issuance of bonds. We're committing to the exploration of making the arrangements to issue those bonds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So, now would not be the appropriate time to talk about things like terms and draws and things of that nature?
One thing to remember, we hired Y River to do this for us, and they are going to go out with an RFP to the banks, and the banks are going to make proposals about how they're going to handle this. That's when we'll be able to pick one of the other banks, and they're all going to have different interest rates and different terms, I'm assuming, and we'll look at them and...
But this would be the time to discuss them in general terms, in terms of answering questions about what are the trade-offs, what are our goals? I mean, that's very much, I think, a relevant discussion today, and along those lines, we're going through this process, and it's going to be a little bit, a lot more involved and complicated than other bonding processes we've done because we have a very specific goal of not taking on more debt for this project than we have reasonably, reasonable expectations of revenue to support. That's why we're doing the project in phases, and we're exploring all these interesting ways of doing this financing so that we can take the debt on in phases as well and not take on an excessive amount of interest payments and negative cash flow too early before we have sufficient revenue coming in from the fiber leasing to cover that. So, that was the charge that we gave to the consultants from Y River and to Ms. Rader, who's our legal counsel on this, and that, this is the process now that they've come up with and that we have to go through to now do that research, develop those alternate proposals, and really look at the trade-offs between the carrying costs and the finance costs and the interest payments between, we don't know what's out there, but those are the ideas that we've put on the table or will put on the table through this RFP to see what's possible, with the idea of obviously minimizing our expenses while we develop the project and develop revenue. Mr. Pecoraro.
I think Mr. Caracci's finished.
Are you?
Well, go ahead. I might have something you may ask.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, thank you to Ms. Wolf and Ms. Palmer for sharing with me the Y River study and some other documents, including Dr. Wack, you know, the information on, you know, how we expect the revenue stream, you know, to come in, to match each of these. So, my first question is, so as I understand it, we're going to break this bond issuance up into maybe five series, four series of bonds? So, we will time each one so that as progress on the fiber project goes forward, and as we are confident that we've got the subscribers to make it worthwhile to do each phase, you know, we will then be able to go out and borrow the money to do the construction of that phase. So, we are matching the expected revenue to each phase of construction, which I think is very smart, not that it wouldn't have been, but, you know, I'm just saying, as I'm catching up, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm glad to see we're doing it that way.
But just to be clear, the four is sort of an initial proposal. It could be three, it could be five, it could be two. We just have to see what comes back.
Right, I understand. But it gives us the flexibility to do exactly that.
Correct.
Do we have any sense, and I don't know if anybody knows this or not, what the rating would be on these bonds? Will the entire $21 million be rated together, or will there be a different rating for each series? We don't know that. Because I see, you know, of course, looking through the documents and from past experience, the cities, the amount of indebtedness we have and a lot of other factors will impact, you know, the rating for the bonds, which will impact the interest rates.
So, to be clear, the city itself is not rated. It never has been.
That's right.
And this series, again, we haven't really decided how we're going to do it. The consultant has decided to write the RFP in a way that it's wide open, that it allows the banks to be very flexible in what they offer to us, so that we have a wide arrangement of choices to find what best fits us. So, at this point, though, there is no rating that I know of.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Any more?
So, you've pretty much covered what I was going to ask about how we're going to break it up and what our intention is, and we're leaving it somewhat open to see what the banks come back and offer us. Are we going to have any type of thresholds set, or will the, do we anticipate the banks setting thresholds for subscriber-ship or anything like that in order to make the draws? We have done that.
We have set a 20 percent threshold. It's in the contract, actually, that we have no obligation to proceed with the next phase until we hit 20 percent subscriber threshold.
And I know we had talked about that at one point in time.
Right.
So, we're going to make that clear, so, that's great. That motivates them to do their job as well, for us to continue to borrow the money to do the project. Good. So, I guess my only other question is, are we going to, I assume we're going to put this out to local banks, any bank that wants to bid on this. It's not going to go to anyone specifically, it's just going to go out to anybody.
I've already talked to most of the local banks, and as soon as the RFP goes up, I'll notify them where they can go on the web to...
Although, it's being equal, of course, I'd like to see us try to keep it as local as possible.
We agree.
I know you guys get sick of me saying that, but I like to bring it up as much as I can.
I'd like to see the interest rate be as low as possible. I don't care where it is.
You know, I'll be honest, I think there's a little bit of both. I'm not willing to put the money in China for a better interest rate, you know, to be honest. Just for me personally, I'd rather keep it somewhat local, even if it meant a quarter of a percent, but I guess we'll have that discussion when it comes about.
Well, that's in China. That gives you a lot of options.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, we'll entertain a motion to introduce Ordinance 856.
I'll move to introduce the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ordinance 856 is approved. We have no unfinished business. We have one item of new business, approval of CTC Technology and Energy Professional Services Contract. Ms. Palmer.
Yes, this is the professional services contract for CTC to do the engineering on the citywide project. They are the same engineering firm that engineered the pilot project for the fiber infrastructure project, so this is for the citywide project. This is in the amount of $825,181.
Any questions about the CTC?
Is this a budgeted item already?
It's in the budget for the larger project.
It is with the larger project?
Right.
So, this isn't coming out of our capital budget?
Well, it is until we borrow the money.
When are we committed to pay them?
When they finish the work.
Which is going to be?
This fall.
When do we anticipate having these bonds issued?
September.
May I say something?
Please.
Last year, you had a transfer, I'm sorry, it's the current, we're still in the current year, I'm sorry, I mean, year end. In the 2015 budget, you had a subsidy going over to the fiber fund of $500,000. You've not spent that money yet.
Okay.
However, just to be clear, this is a commitment to proceed with this project. There's, you know, we're spending the money to engineer the next phase, so if there are qualms about that, we should talk about that now because we need to commit to finishing this.
Oh, yeah.
If we don't have the, look, I'm just, I'm 100 percent committed to the project.
That's all.
So, let's be clear on that. But I want to make sure we're not in a situation where we owe them $450,000 that we don't have. We have $500,000 in the fund. If the bonds aren't issued, that's going to leave us $400,000 short, if my math's marginally correct, or $350,000. How are we going to manage that for that gap?
That's an interesting problem.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Guess we should proceed with the bond.
Agreed, right. Agreed. So, are timings going to work out?
Yes.
We'll have the bonds available and ready?
Yes. We will write the bonds in a way that they allow us to reimburse ourselves for any cost paid upfront. It's already, this is not a tax-exempt bond, by the way. This will be a taxable bond, so we can reimburse ourselves out of the loan. So, if we front money up, we'll be able to pay ourselves back out of the loan.
Okay. So, if there's a float for a month or two?
That's a good way to put it, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a pickle where...
From a cash flow perspective.
Absolutely. And I realize we have a line that we also could draw on in existence, but obviously, we want to be careful and make sure that we're segregating it as best as we can from those things, which is what we agreed upon from the beginning, that this would be almost operating as a...
Enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, very much like water or the municipal housing project, right? So...
However, just to be clear, even though we're treating it as an enterprise fund, it is very much dependent on the general fund, and if there are problems in the fiber fund, it has to be subsidized out of the general fund.
Mr. President, that's true, but it's really not, I mean, before we panic about that, it's really not any different than any other city projects we do. I mean, you know, the big water projects that we do, you know, although they're not general obligation, you know, bonds, you know, they're out of an enterprise fund, the city is still on the line for those.
Sure.
So, we're always on the line for these things. This is no different than anything else.
I was looking at it much from a cash flow perspective as anything else. That's really the...
We're going to have to count on Ms. Palmer to...
I have management.
We're committed to the project, no question.
I have no issues cash flow-wise for this year.
And even though we don't have the money in hand yet, the project will start generating cash flow in the next quarter, so we will be starting getting...
Have some received, some cash coming in.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, now, it's not going to be that much right away, but, you know, this isn't, this is different than the other city projects in that regard as well, is that this is going to generate revenue, fairly significant revenue, in fairly short order. So, there will be some mismatch, but the long-term plan is that it will all match up.
Great.
We have studied this...
Ad nauseam.
Yes.
As a matter of word.
We have spent a lot of time working this arrangement out, and I think all feel comfortable.
Yes, and just another caveat is that the TING contract also helps us with debt service if we get into any kind of trouble with revenue stream, so there are some safeguards in place.
I do remember that.
Substantial safeguards.
In fact, $400,000... So, that covers the difference right there.
The city picks up, I believe, the first $150,000 of debt service, and TING picks out on the second, the next part of $400,000 if the revenue stream is not covering debt service.
Great. Good.
All right.
Hey, man, I got to ask the questions. Wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't.
Any other questions, any other discussion? All right.
I'll make a motion that we...
Actually, you know what? I have one comment to make.
There you go.
CTC has done a fantastic job for us during this pilot phase, and Matt Dehaven, in particular, has solved some very thorny, technical, and also non-technical problems with some of our vendors, with different agencies we've had to work with, adjacent jurisdictions. Some of it's way too inside-baseball and technical to get into the details, but he has been an invaluable asset to this project, and I personally appreciate the help he's given us getting this thing done.
Good, because it's an $800-plus-thousand contract that shows how he's helping us.
The fiber lighting ceremony this Friday wouldn't be happening on schedule if it weren't for some of the invaluable assistance that he's given us getting some of these things done. So, anyway, they've done a good job for us.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we approve the CTC service contract. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have departmental reports. Ms. Wolf.
Good evening. Not a whole lot to report tonight. We have week one of summer camp under our belts, so 10 more weeks to go, everything's going well. We are full for all 11 weeks of camp this summer, at 60 campers per week, so some of them are with us all summer long, some of the children are new from week to week. So, we have instituted this year a weekly survey. At the end of each camp week, we send a survey out to parents with some interactive questions that they'll ask their children, reading their experience with camp this week, and we have started to receive feedback, which has been very positive, and I'll hopefully have an aggregate report to share with you at the end of our camp season. The repointing project continues at the armory. We have rounded the corner, literally. We are now on the east side of the building, and things seem to be going well. If Mr. Glass was here, I'm sure he'd have more of an in-depth report, but there is a noticeable difference when you look at the front of the building, especially around the housing for the SEAL. It's all cleaned up, and you don't see any visible cracks or pieces of missing mortar anymore, so the coping is sound, and it looks very nice as they progress around the building. So, if you're traveling that direction, stop and look up, and you'll notice a difference in the front of the armory at this point. Also, work has started at Belgrove Square Park. The electricians began last week, and they did some discovery trenching to decide if the current conduit was sound and if they could reuse the conduit. We cannot use what's intact, so new conduit will be laid, and wiring will be, new wiring will reach all of the existing light posts that are in the park. So, once the lighting is replaced, the benches will arrive, and that project will almost be complete at that point in time. The July events for Recreation and Parks Month actually start on June 30th. We're going to do a stargazing event on top of the Longwell Garage, top deck, so that will go from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. If you can join us, that would be great. And then, our first official event kicking off July is Snowballs on Locust Lane. They will be free from noon to 1:00 on July 1st, and then, of course, our Month of Sunday Summer Concert Series kicks off with the band Dells on Sunday, July 7th. So, we will have an activity every day for the entire month of July. Yes.
Ms. Weber, can you send us a note with those dates and times?
Sure, I would be happy to send you a PDF of the whole calendar.
Thank you.
And we'd love to see you out at some of them.
My son was just asking when, my youngest son was asking about Shark in the Park.
Oh, July 11th. We're ready.
Is it going to be Jaws and Sharknado?
No, we went with, we went with more of a kid-related movie this year, so we're going with Shark Tale.
Gotcha.
Yes, yes.
Very excited about it.
Good. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any additional questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to introduce our two interns, and gentlemen, you'll have to correct me if I mispronounce your names. Alex Ushomisky.
Ushomisky.
Thank you, and Justin Brettenbach. These two fellows have been with us now for a week, and they've already done tremendous work for us. Justin has completed the cross-referencing of the registered vehicle list, so we receive our fair share of vehicle titling revenues. He's currently adding zoning codes to each address in our parcel manager. Alex completed the water fee schedule to the account analysis, which helps us to identify potential purging to make our system more efficient. He's currently adding trash pickup routes to our utility billing system, so we can automate the listing for the trash removal system, or for the trash removal company. Both young men assisted in pulling all of the audit records. They started on Friday and ended up this morning, which is, I'm pretty sure, a record for the finance department. We love them, and we're not sure we're giving them back at the end of the summer. That's all I have.
We only had one intern last year, and we liked him so much that when they asked, I said, "Well, we'll take two." And remember, these are high school students.
Yes, but they're seniors at Centurion.
Going into your senior year?
So, we're very, very pleased with them.
That's exciting.
We have a citizen comment period at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yep, we'll get there.
Chief?
As the council's aware, Major Ron Stevens, our deputy chief, will be retiring on August 21st. In anticipation of that vacancy, we advertised to hire a new deputy chief from the outside of the agency. We got a great number of very qualified applicants from around the state and, in fact, around the country, but after a very comprehensive interview and screening process, I'm very pleased to announce tonight that we will be hiring Thomas J. Ledwell of Thurmont as our new deputy chief. Tom is here this evening. If you would just stand up for the sake of the cameras, Tom. And Tom will be joining us on the Westminster Police Department on the 4th of August. So, it's a little premature yet, but I wanted to get him here to introduce to the council as soon as practical. You may have heard Tom's name in the past. He has extensive law enforcement experience, spent 22 years with the Frederick City Police Department prior to his retirement a year and a half, two years ago, and the last two years of that service were as chief of police in the city of Frederick. So, he has extensive law enforcement and executive experience. I met Tom informally at some Maryland chief's functions, was impressed by him then, was very pleased to see his name on the list of those people who applied for our position. Tom not only has many years of experience with the Frederick Police Department, he also holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Maryland and an MBA from Frostburg State University. He also serves as an adjunct instructor at Mount St. Mary's, so he's a very talented guy. I'm sure I only know this much of his talents thus far, but from what I've seen and heard of Tom, I think he's going to make a tremendous addition to our staff after Ron's departure. He'll be coming on, have a couple of weeks to overlap with Ron before Ron ultimately retires and heads off in his motor home, but very pleased to have Tom here tonight to introduce him to the council.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very excited and honored to be working with the citizens of Westminster.
Can I have a question?
Not yet. We're getting there, soon.
Sir, your citizen's comments will be at the end of the meeting. Until then, you need to sit quietly, please. Thank you.
I have no report. The Ethics Commission is meeting tomorrow. Thank you, George. To go, to adopt, to approve forms and for complaints and for advisory opinions and for your financial disclosure.
Okay. I would like to let tell you that I spoke today to 200 young men at Boy State, sponsored by the American Legion. I thought I was going to a classroom. Turned out to be the auditorium. Thought I probably should have appeared a little bit better. These young men are here, they do this every year. They write their own charter, their own code, figure out how they're going to elect people, then they go through and elect people, and it's sort of a very interesting process that they go through, ask great questions, I mean, really on-target questions about voter apathy and why people don't vote, and why there's not a lot more publicity on local elections, and ask me, actually, if 100 percent of the people voted here, would I still have the same council that I have now? I assured them that I was certain it would be that way, but they were, it was very interesting. I mean, really on-target questions about voter apathy and why people don't vote, and what, why there's not a lot more publicity on local elections, and ask me actually, if 100 percent of the people voted here, would I still have the same counsel that I have now? I assured them that I was certain it would be that way, but they were, it was very interesting. It was a very interesting experience. I had no idea they did this. It's like 200 people. I mean, it's like a lot of them, they come from all over the state. The second thing I'd like to make sure I bring to council's attention, I know I've talked to some of you, Habitat for Humanity has approached us about continuing on the project from Union Street, and what they are going to do is to sell two of the mortgages that they have to banks, and the banks will take over the servicing of the mortgages and pay Habitat $200 and some thousand dollars, the cost of the mortgages, for Habitat to use to renovate other houses. They are looking for houses that are vacant and in foreclosure in the city. We have given them a list of 30 that we have, that we know about, for them to look at and make a decision as to which ones they could renovate and sell on to other people. This was something that we were allowed to do under the grant that we got from the Community Development Block Grant Program. So, we would have to approve this whole operation, and then we would have to report on it till the houses sell again, which is not really a major problem. But I want to let council know that maybe everybody knew that they were planning that.
So, they hold that money on their own typically? I didn't realize that.
And we have to report how they spend it, but, yes, they would get that money. It's a very interesting way of continuing to renovate houses, and particularly since they're looking for closed, this is a little different than actually building one, which is what they've done in the past. So, I think that's a good thing. And that was my report, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Now, we're at the period of time in the meeting for citizen comments. If you would like to be heard, please raise your hand, identify yourself, and state your address for the recording secretary to record in the minutes. Yes, sir?
My name is Dennis DeShong, and I'd like to explain-
Can you please tell the secretary your address, please?
2993 Royal Court, Westminster, Maryland 21158. Phone number 443732617. Okay, I'd like to address the first issue with this officer right here. Why are we not promoting Carroll County? Why are we not promoting Carroll County? We've got to go out of our county to hire an officer.
Okay, what's your next question, sir?
Well, I want that one answered first.
This isn't for discussion, this is just for citizens to make comments.
Just so I can blow off steam, right? That's all it is. So, in other words, I call all you all all day, and nobody's ever in your office.
Sir, you have never called me, ever once.
Don't tell me. I've been calling.
You're running out of time, sir. Do you have any other comments to make?
I'm telling you, I've been calling. I have never received a call back from anyone.
You have never called me, chief.
I don't have a personal phone number for you, sir.
You're right.
Tony.
Yeah. So, when have you called me? You just got done saying you called me, but now you're telling me you don't have a phone number?
Sir, 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 I don't have a personal phone number.
So, sir, do you have any other comments to make?
Yes, I have another one. There is a, the CATS program that is here over Carroll County.
That's run by the county?
Yeah, but the commissioners are the ones that decided.
We're not the commissioners, sir. This is the city council for the city of Westminster.
Oh, you're not the commissioners?
No, they meet over on Court Street.
So, Westminster City Council?
There you go.
Meeting.
Perfectly reasonable mistake to make. Thank you very much. Is anybody else?
I apologize so much, because I thought it was a city council, and I've been calling them for over a week.
The county commissioners, you mean?
County commissioners.
They meet over at the county office building on Center Street.
I apologize.
Tuesdays and Thursdays. I think about 10 o'clock.
But I was really curious as far as traffic going down on Bond Street. Traffic travels at the same rate of speed that they do on 27 down my street, 27, or Bond Street, which is a shootout, but there's never an officer there to regulate speed.
So, most of-
There's many, many children there.
It depends on where on Bond Street. There's a large part of Bond Street that's outside the city, which is why the city police don't-
I'm talking about right here, about the church, right here off of Main Street, a block up the street. Right when you hit the church there, right by the church, once they hit that church, these people are flying down and up, because they know that they can bypass 27 and come around and come up that street. So, they travel at excessive speeds. It's never addressed. I've had it addressed sometime. In fact, I've stood out there in front of cars to stop them. You know, I've got children.
Sure.
You know, and you're going to travel 50 mile an hour up the road? I'm sorry. It's not appropriate.
So, we'll get with the chief and see what we can do about that. Thanks for bringing up.
I really do apologize.
No problem. Anybody else like to be heard tonight? All right, where'd you go?
See you, Marty.